I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's cable information channel, one three zero one. It will also be available for viewing on the Town's website at L E X S C dot com. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce my fellow council members. To my right is Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To my left is Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Good evening.
And to his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kathy Manus and Councilmember Ron Williams and Councilmember Todd Lyle are not present this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Todd Carnes for invocation for tonight's meeting.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we do pause just briefly to show our gratitude to you, to thank you for the health, the prosperity, the freedom, the community, the goodness you provided for us all. And so, we're very thankful. We know that comes from you. I pray you give us wisdom as we try to be good leaders, try to create a just society, a fun society, a good society that we can be proud of. And that's well beyond our wisdom. We ask for your wisdom to make good decisions, and we ask for your continued favor on us and our community in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Carnes. At this time, we have a very special guest. This is Lexington County Veteran, Mr. Terry Hicks. Mr. Hicks, if you would come forward and please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would please stand and remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hicks, thank you very much. Tell us a little bit about yourself, Mr. Hicks. We want to know.
Okay, I'm a member of the Lexington County Veterans Group. At one time, when we first started off, it would just open up to Vietnam veterans, but now we have opened it up to all veterans. And most of us has been through a lot, and it's a group that's very special. Anyone is welcome to come. Don't cost you a dime to join it. And we do have a K D, and we do take up a little money for here and yonder. You don't have to give anything, but we've got a real good counselor. I've been going to this counseling group, I'm twelve years, and they are a wonderful group to be associated with, and we help one another, like I said. And we do different things. We sometimes go on field trips. In fact, we just went to Fort Jackson and toured it, and we do adopt the families. Most of it is veterans, but we facilitate it. And we would love to have more members, you know. And the first time you come, you've got to keep coming back more than one time to see and get the feel of the group. And it took me something like about two months, you know, to get feeling comfortable with the situation. But like I said, we care for one another, and we try to reach out to all the veterans. And I think right now, something like about eighteen of us is pretty well active in it. We've got more members, but health problems and stuff kind of slows some of them down. But we would like to invite anybody that wants to come to come on down. And we meet at the American Legion Hut every Tuesday from ten to twelve. And we'd like to have someone come talk to us, you know. We love that. And we want to get our names out there, you know, try to draw more people and get more involved with us.
Sure. Well, thank you, Mr. Hicks. We can't thank you enough for your service to this country, and we're glad you're a member of our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Yes, sir.
At this time, I will call the meeting to order. We'll move right into deletions on the agenda. I believe we are going to pull item number three of old business. Ms. Hildebrand, number three of old business, we will pull that from tonight's meeting. Anyone else have anything they'd like to delete? Hearing none, we'll move right into presentations. Our first presentation this evening, I want to welcome Ms. Paula Calhoun. She's a member of the South Carolina House of Representatives. If you would, please come forward. Welcome, and we are glad to have you here with us tonight, Paula. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McDougall. Councilmen and women, thank you for this opportunity before guests and viewers to recognize Chief Terrence Green and the Police Department of the Town of Lexington with a resolution passed by the South Carolina House of Representatives on May the third, but framed after Sonny Die. So, yes, my name is Paula Calhoun, and as a member of the South Carolina General Assembly, I serve a portion of Lexington County District eighty-seven. I am delighted to share this occasion with you. Joining me at the podium for this presentation are Chief Terrence Green. Let's bring Matt Timmerman up and Inspector Missy Silcox. And J.J. Jones is the Executive Director of the South Carolina Law Enforcement Officers Association. I'm going to ask him to join me to hold the resolution. Chris Wooton was supposed to be here, but obviously, I don't think he's arrived yet.
Okay.
So, if you will hold this for me while we make some remarks. And Sheriff Coon spoke with him, and he had a conflict tonight, or otherwise, he would be here too. So, the resolution addresses law enforcement leadership in our community by Chief Green for receiving agency accreditation with the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, and it's called CALEA. And he has done this five consecutive times. It is important to state that in prior years, CALEA was obtained every three years. Today, it's acquired every four years. CALEA is the gold standard in public safety with a review of policies and practices against internationally accepted public safety standards. CALEA accreditation embodies the precepts of community-oriented policing whereby law enforcement agencies and citizens work together to prevent and control challenges confronting law enforcement. On April the second of two thousand and twenty-two, the Lexington Police Department received not a basic accreditation, but an advanced law enforcement accreditation award, which requires meeting a higher standard of excellence. Just to receive this advanced award signifies the agency's ongoing commitment to attaining the highest level of professionalism through determination and gritty, hard work. Under the leadership of Chief Green, the Lexington Police Department has consistently met the highest standard of excellence for accreditation in leadership, through transparency, in sound training, defined lines of authority, resource management, and service delivery in community-focused public safety. Please join me in recognizing Chief Green of the Town of Lexington and the Department for receiving CALEA Advanced Law Enforcement Accreditation for the fifth time and for Chief Green's dedicated service to the people of our community and the state of South Carolina. Chief Green, will you step forward, please?
Yeah. Come on out front. Come on out front. We'll take some pictures.
And thank you for this opportunity.
Paula, thank you so much for being with us, and really, thank you for what you do for the town. We are very well represented, and we appreciate you. Our next presentation for this evening, I want to welcome Mr. Harold Moore and Mr. Greg Griggs from the South Carolina Department of Public Safety. This is a presentation of the South Carolina Department of Public Safety. Harold Moore and Greg Griggs, they're going to present to you the DUI Officer of the Year for two thousand and twenty-one. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you all for being with us.
We would like to thank you for having us here today, and if we could, we would like to go ahead and call up Mr. Shawn Ludwig. Just very quickly, I'd kind of like to give you a brief description of how we look at our awards and how we go about our selection process. Each year, we have an individual and separate committee that looks over our awarding process and all of our applications. These applications are submitted by their departments, and they stand out as impressive for each department and for the state itself. That committee is completely set aside from us, so they have a perspective that is a little bit different. I would like to tell you, or I'd like to read some of what Officer Ludwig, his department sent for him. Last year, in two thousand and twenty-one, the Lexington Police Department had an eighty-eight percent increase in their DUI arrests. That number went from one hundred and nine in two thousand and twenty to two hundred and five in two thousand and twenty-one. Officer Ludwig had sixty-three DUI arrests, the highest for their agency at that time. That is impressive, not just for the agency themselves, but for dedication to the process of DUI enforcement and keeping our roads safe. His department sent quite an impressive list of information, and I don't want to take all of your time in reading it, but of that, that is something that we would like to make note of, and if it's okay, I would like to read our award.
Absolutely, please.
The South Carolina Department of Public Safety presents the Officer of the Year Award to Patrol in First Class, Shawn Ludwig of the Lexington Police Department, for excelling in the area of DUI arrests, DUI victim services, and the anti-Underage Drinking Programs in South Carolina during the two thousand and twenty-one year.
Fantastic.
I also have my director, Director Phil Rowley, for the Office of Highway Safety and Justice Programs with us, and I would like to offer him the opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll be brief. I work in Blythewood, but I live in Lexington, so this is near and dear to my heart. I can tell you that it's not easy to win Officer of the Year, and I know you all are concerned about keeping your communities safe, and I appreciate those efforts. But I tell you, a big part of that is traffic safety, and when it comes to fatalities, this is hot off the press, but the latest statistic is forty-eight percent of our state's fatalities involve either somebody under the influence of alcohol or the involvement of drugs, whether legal or prescription. So, it's not safe out there, but luckily, you have officers like Ludwig, his efforts, and those like him, and he is keeping, and they are keeping our communities safer by their presence. And I tell you, that title he carries behind his name, TSI, Traffic Safety Instructor, that is quite an accomplishment that he's achieved. He's probably one of the most well-trained officers in the state. No kidding. So, just want to come here and recognize him, at least apart from what they do, we appreciate their efforts and want to recognize him for his accomplishment, and just say, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate you doing that. And Shawn, come on, step forward. We want to hear from you. This cannot go unnoticed. You've got to talk a little bit.
I'm not a good public speaker, but I want to appreciate and thank my department for allowing us to, with the efforts in DUI enforcement, to include these gentlemen back behind me for acknowledging things like this and how important it is, especially for the state, not only for the Town of Lexington. And especially want to thank my wife for all the crazy hours that I had to work as a result and overtime. So, she had to put up with a lot, but I appreciate everything y'all do as well, and the support of the Police Department, and I know the chief always preaches on it, so thank you, chief, and my supervisor directly, Grady Johnson, so.
Fantastic work, Shawn. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, is it too late to get some brief words from Chief Green for his presentation as well?
You don't want no brief words. I wasn't asked to raise words about that. May also, love was family always from Illinois. In fact, twin brother back there.
Back to back.
Back to back. One for three feet.
Thank you, chief, for your words.
Thank you all for coming down. Appreciate y'all being here. Y'all travel safe. Our next presentation this evening is a proclamation read by Councilmember Steve Baker. This is a proclamation of the Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day. Heather Ramsey, are you with us? Heather, come on, step forward to the microphone, and we're going to let Mr. Baker read your proclamation.
If I can have that.
Absolutely. Bring them on.
My supporters with us?
Yeah, come on.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a proclamation of the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington declaring June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day. Whereas Tourette Syndrome is an inherited neurological disorder that is characterized by involuntary physical and vocal tics that occur many times a day, and whereas Tourette Syndrome is often accompanied by mental health disorders such as attention deficit and obsessive-compulsive disorder, learning disabilities, and anxiety. And whereas Tourette Syndrome and tic disorders affect one in one hundred children, more than ten thousand eight hundred school-aged children in the state of South Carolina alone are dealing with Tourette Syndrome, and although some of these cases are aided by medication, there is no standard treatment or known cure for the disorder. And whereas there is an important need for more professional help with interest and expertise to identify, counsel, and treat people with Tourette Syndrome, a disorder that is often misdiagnosed and misunderstood. And whereas positive actions to assist children and families living with Tourette Syndrome would result from a broadening of public and professional knowledge and acceptance of Tourette Syndrome. And whereas the Tourette Association's Greater Carolinas Group are actively providing services to families, educating medical professionals and teachers, and supporting research to better understand the signs and treatment of TS. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington that June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, shall be recognized as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day, as a special day to promote understanding, compassion, and acceptance for all of our fellow citizens who deserve and need our support to break the stigma that surrounds Tourette Syndrome. Dated this thirteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-two, Mayor Steve McDougal.
Thank you very much. Heather, floor yours.
Thank you very much. I appreciate Mayor's support as well as Council. I do want to recognize those who are with me tonight, supporting me, Representative Paula Calhoun, and Sel, and those with the Lexington Women's Club who were unable to attend. And I'm very excited. I have my two youth ambassadors representing South Carolina, Haley Baum and my brand-new junior youth ambassador, Harper. So, I appreciate this very much. It's very meaningful to me because I grew up in Lexington. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you all for being with us. Young ladies, have anything you'd like to share? No? Okay. Well, we really appreciate y'all being with us. We're going to take a few pictures. Y'all come forward. We want to take some pictures. How are you doing?
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you all so much for being with us tonight.
Very sense of regard.
Oh, that's good.
Maybe next year.
Yep, that's good. Well, thank you, Mr. Sel. It's good to see you. At this time, I will have a vision plan update for June. We are in the beginning phases of awarding the contract to renovate and expand Virginia Hilton Park. The plan is to start construction on part of the project later this summer. This will be a complete overhaul of the park and will include all new features and new equipment. Foundation work for the wayfinding signs started this week. Once that is complete, the signs in the downtown corridor will be installed. This project will help point people to popular destinations and parking located within the town limits. These are just some of the projects that are part of the Town's Vision Plan. For a complete list, please visit our website, again, at L E X S C dot com. At this time, I will have a traffic update from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Asphalt paving crews are expected to address punch list items along North Lake Drive and Harmon Street area over the coming weeks. This work will be intimate and could require an occasional lane closure. We appreciate your patience while this project is finalized. Adapted traffic signals are now fully operational. Town staff will continue to make adjustments over the coming weeks. The next traffic committee meeting is scheduled for September the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at eight a.m. And please call eight oh three, three five eight, seven two seven three to report any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway condition, or pothole that needs to be repaired.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Protam. At this time, we will move into public hearing. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing this evening is a final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number four three three two dash zero two dash zero zero three, located at five zero eight Northwood Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, item number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number four three zero zero dash zero seven dash zero one three, located at two eight one Old Chapin Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, item number three, final reading of an ordinance to adopt the FY two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget. Anyone here wish to speak to that? And finally, final reading of an ordinance to provide for the FY two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three tax levy. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, that concludes our public hearings for this evening. We'll move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, four three three two dash zero two dash zero zero three, located at five zero eight Northwood Road. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whitney and Roy Mitchell own approximately one point six acres located at five oh eight Northwood Road and have petitioned to annex the property. Single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential, and Northwood Road is classified as an RL four road. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their April meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this property. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval to annex the property.
Mr. Carnes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. This is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number four three zero zero dash zero seven dash zero one three, located at two eight one Old Chapin Road. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Wiley and Linda Roberts own four point zero two acres located at two eighty-one Old Chapin Road and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential and protected residential two. Old Chapin Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their April meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the property and collector road classification for Old Chapin Road. I make a motion for final reading approval to annex the property.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston. This is final reading of an ordinance to adopt the FY two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. South Carolina law requires Town Council to adopt a balanced budget each year. Budget revenue and expenditures are attached, as well as the draft ordinance. I make a motion for final reading of approval for budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is final reading of an ordinance to provide for the FY two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three tax levy. Mr. Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. South Carolina law requires Town Council to adopt the tax levy each year. Attached is the draft ordinance for the tax levy for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. I make a request for final reading approval.
Mr. Carnes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we'll move into new business. Our first item of new business is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number five four nine eight dash zero five dash zero zero two, located in the one hundred block of Industrial Drive. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. James S. Goonyard owns four point zero eight acres located in the one hundred block of Industrial Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. Property is currently undeveloped. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial and general commercial. Industrial Drive, South Lake Drive, and Interstate twenty are all classified as arterial roads. The Planning Commission will review this annexation during their June meeting to recommend zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading approval to annex the property.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protam. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number four four nine six dash zero two dash one five four, located at two six seven seven Minnells Springs Road. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jared and Caitlin Smith own four acres located at twenty-six seventy-seven Minnells Springs Road and have petitioned to annex the property. The property is currently undeveloped, but a single-family home is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential and protected residential two. Minnells Springs Road is classified as a collector road. The Planning Commission will review this annexation during their June meeting to recommend zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading approval to annex the property.
Mayor Protam makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business, again, Mayor Protam. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number four three zero zero dash zero four dash zero one six, located at four fifty-five Old Cherokee Road. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lexington School District one owns thirty-four point fifty-three acres located at four five five Old Cherokee Road and has petitioned to annex the property. Lakeside Middle School is being constructed on this site. Properties in town near this one are zoned limited commercial and protected residential. Old Cherokee Road is classified as a collector road. Planning Commission will review this annexation during their June meeting to recommend zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading approval to annex the property.
Mayor Protam makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number five four two three dash zero four dash zero zero of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map number five four two three dash zero four dash zero zero six, located at one zero seven Mill Street. Councilmember Carnes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Linda Crispino owns a parcel located at one oh seven Mill Street and has petition to annex the property. A single-family home is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential and high-density residential. Mill Street is classified as an RL two road. The Planning Commission will review this annexation during their June meeting and recommend zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading approval to annex the property.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. This is first reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map number four three zero zero dash zero three dash zero five six, located in the fifty-four hundred block of Augusta Road. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. MW two R E L L C owns approximately one point five acres located in the five four zero zero block of Augusta Road and has petition to annex the property. Property is currently undeveloped. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial, and Augusta Road is classified as an arterial road. Planning Commission will review the annexation during their June meeting to recommend zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading approval to annex the property.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Is there a second? Mayor Pro Tim seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of business is from Mayor Pro Tim. This is first reading of an ordinance amending common nuisance ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At May the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two work session, council discussed amending ninety-three point two O C, which addresses weeds, grass, and overgrowth. There's a possibility that enforcement becomes confusing because there are different penalties for violations of Section A and C in ninety-three point two O. Section C be separated from ninety-three point two O and become a standalone portion of the Code of Ordinance. The pertinent sections are attached. I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Pro Tim makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes seconds that motion. Any further discussion on this matter? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tim. This is first reading of an ordinance amending section one five five point zero three point zero seven of the zoning ordinance required setbacks. Mayor Pro Tim.
During the April work session and council retreat, town council discussed amendments to the zoning ordinance for protected residential two developments. The attached draft ordinance addresses the concerns raised during this discussion. The Planning Commission will review these amendments during their June meeting. I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Pro Tim makes a motion.
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds that motion. Oh, Councilmember Carnes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is first reading of an ordinance amending section one five nine point zero three point zero two and one five nine point zero seven point zero three of the zoning ordinance. This relates to commercial center signs. Councilmember Carnes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, during the April work session, council discussed amendments to the sign ordinance for commercial center signs. The attached draft ordinance addresses the concerns raised. During these discussions, the Planning Commission will review these amendments during their June meeting. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. This is a boards and commissions reappointments. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The terms for the following boards and commissions members will expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Repointments require approval by council advisory committee Edith Harmon, Mary Stokes Clark, Lauren Palkowski, Adam Deloach, Latoya Reed. Board of Zoning Appeals Ronald W. Fisher. Planning Commission Jarrett Harrelson, Jamie Feit, and Janie Michaels. Traffic Committee Julie Bartels, Lisa Gibson, Jennifer Morgan. Current boards and commissions vacancies, there are three on the advisory committee, two for the Board of Zoning Appeals, three for the Building Code Board of Appeals, two for Historic Preservation, and three on the Traffic Committee. I make a motion for council approval of reappointments.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes seconds the motion. Any further discussion on reappointments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Those appointments are made. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. This is first reading of an ordinance leasing the South Carolina Highway Patrol. Councilmember Carnes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, South Carolina Highway Patrol has leased space in Lexington Municipal Complex since two thousand and six. Prior to this agreement, troopers had to drive to Shop Road in Columbia to write reports, have in-office meetings, et cetera. It is felt by keeping the Lexington troop in Lexington, they act as a force multiplier with Lexington PD, improving protection for citizens. The current contract is subject to expire soon. Staff has been working with the Highway Patrol staff to negotiate a new contract. The new contract has a three-year term with two automatic extensions of a year each if neither party gives notice. There is a five percent increase in the rental fee for the first year and an additional two percent increase each following year. I make a motion for first reading approval of this ordinance.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim seconds that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tim. This is first reading of an ordinance approving Soranex for multi-county industrial park. Mayor Pro Tim.
Mr. Mayor, town council is being asked to approve the creation of a multi-county industrial park as outlined by the attached proposed ordinance. The subject property is owned by Soranex Exercise Equipment Inc. Soranex property is located in the town, and section four dash one dash one seven oh of the code provides that a municipality must consent to the creation or expansion of a multi-county industrial business park which encompasses property, property located within such municipality. I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Pro Tim makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carnes.
How big is this acreage that Soranex is putting into this park? It's not, I can't see it.
I don't know the acreage off the top of my head, but it's the Old Glass Master site.
Okay.
So it's the entirety of that complex.
Perfect. Good enough. Thank you.
Anyone else? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will hear announcements tonight from Mayor Pro Tim.
They talk a lot tonight. Market at Ice House is in full swing. If you have not been to the market yet, you need to come this Saturday. It really is an awesome market. I was impressed enough to disturb Walker last week on Saturday and tell him what a great job. It's every Saturday through September the twenty-fourth, with the exception of July the second from nine to one. A downtown venue promoter, Walker Brewery, continues to do a great job getting so many vendors, live music, and food trucks. Don't miss it. Go check it out. The Ice, and I think the chief has been down there somewhere. You can have coffee with a cop. Ice coffee with a cop. The Ice, and they check car seats, right? The Ice House Amphitheater continues to host many great events and concerts, including this Friday night, bring the kids to see the Disney movie Encanto. It's free, and the movie starts at eight thirty PM. This is a big one. On Friday night, July the first, come out to see and hear the town of Lexington Independence Day celebration. The two hundred and forty-sixth Army Band will play a concert from seven thirty until nine, followed by a spectacular fireworks show. You can also tune in to ninety-three point one FM, The Lake, to listen to patriotic music during the fireworks. The best viewing spots include Ice House Amphitheater, Main Street Restaurants, Lexington Square Park, the Lexington Veterans Monument, and any public parking lot in the downtown area. The town's parking lots on Church Street will be closed all day to prepare for the show. Sister Hazel will be back in concert on July the twenty-third. Rain or shine, gates open at six PM. Tickets are thirty-two dollars and can be purchased at www dot IceHouseAmphitheater dot com. Rock of Ages will hold concerts on August the fifth, sixth, eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. Come out and relive the greatest rock hits of the eighties. Gates open at seven PM, and the show will start at eight thirty. Tickets are thirty dollars and can be purchased at www dot IceHouseAmphitheater dot com. We have several town meetings lined up for June and July, including the Planning Commission will meet on June the twenty-second at eight AM in the council chambers. In keeping with council's summer schedule, the next council work session and regular council meeting, meeting will both be held on July the eleventh, starting at six in the conference center and council chambers. The Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on July the twenty-first at five thirty in the council chambers. Town Hall will be closed on Monday, July the fourth in observance of Independence Day. And don't forget to go out and vote tomorrow in the primary. On behalf of the mayor and my fellow council members, we would like to wish you a fun and safe summer, and thank you for tuning in tonight for the town council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I appreciate you stepping in and reading announcements. Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes, sir, Mr. Paul.
I would like to say thank you to Kathy and to Lorraine and the rest of Finance Department for all the hard work that got put in to bring you guys that budget that was passed tonight. And there's a, we start on that as early as January, and many, many months are spent on that. And I just want to extend thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate you. Very good. Anyone else? Any questions from the news media? I don't believe we had any news media tonight. Public comments. Are there any public comments? Hearing none. That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the town council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall Monday evening, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, one three zero one, several times during this week, and the video will be available on the town's website at lex sc dot com. Without objection, we are adjourned.